And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in our business meeting. It is January 7th, our first business meeting of 2016. My gosh, it's 16. Amazing. And so, last minute, Crupp, to take our roll.
Well, good morning, Commissioners, and happy new year. We are joined this morning with County Council, Mr. Stephen Madcor, and our Clerk of the Board, Mary Rathke. So, I'll start with the roll. Commissioner Bernard, here. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Ledlow?
Here. Commissioner Savis, excuse please, rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first order of business is citizens communication. We have a card from Mr. Les Poole.
Good morning, Les Poole, Clackamas County. Yeah, what happened to 2015? I asked people that several times this week, and everybody smiles. It was supposed to go slower than 2014, but it didn't. And here it is, 2016. We've got an election coming. Hopefully, we're gonna see some good results. And I've been seeing a lot of information, I'm sure you're getting flooded with information, about what's gonna happen in this little short session in Salem. And my prediction's pretty easy. We're gonna kick too many cans down the road. We're probably gonna see some unfunded promises and mandates, and meddling with the economy that down the road isn't gonna do us any good. That's my legislative update for the day. And I'm sure we'll see more in the future regarding how the Oregon Land Use Plan is being applied. There's a big difference between a law and who's in control of how it's interpreted. Doesn't take a rocket scientist or an attorney to figure that out. And when I look at the Oregon Land Use Plan, and I look back as a young boy, when I was fortunate enough to see it evolve, and fortunate enough to, years later, meet and interview and talk with people like Fred Vanada, people like Bill Mischowski, the people that were there, the farmers that were trying to protect their farmland, but still allow flexibility. And somewhere hidden deeply in the Oregon Land Use Plan was goal one, citizen communication, which implied, citizen participation, excuse me, and it implied what? It implied local control. And what do we have going on? What did, I can't even begin to imagine how much the county spent on staff time and legal research and lobbying and dealing with the fact that Clackamas County, Washington County, and Multnomah County all have the wherewithal and the ability to control density, interpret the Oregon Land Use Plan, and administer the growth boundary. We have to do something, and it has to start right here, because Clackamas County's ground zero. Clackamas County is not a hotbed because it's full of rebels or people that are stuck in 1955. Clackamas County's a hotbed because we're split, because we're controlled too much by Metro, and because we're where the rubber meets the road. As a land use guy, I can conclude by telling everyone that doesn't realize it, because sometimes the obvious flies right past you. We're where the growth is coming. We're where people are coming to retire. And I'm hopeful that you continue to pursue some solutions that will allow, in the long run, less density, not increased density, but less density than what we're seeing imposed on us, and more industrial land. We are, we are losing and have been losing. And whether you're a Democrat or Republican, or you're unregistered, it's affecting you. And so, I appreciate the time and the opportunity, and it's a new year. Let's try and work together and make some things happen. And I appreciate the fact that anyone that wants to can come in here and have a few minutes to share their piece. This is not a courtroom. Sometimes it looks a little bit like one, but it's not. And I encourage folks to show up, come down, and speak their piece. And those that want to refute what I say are more than welcome to try. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Yeah, you, uh, these meetings are, I think, very civil in comparison to the two previous chairs, where they gavelled down a whole heck of a lot of people. I pride myself on never having to gavel down anybody. I might recess and have a chat, but that's as far as it's gonna probably go. So now, it is time to select the vice chair for 2016. Do I have a motion?
I move we appoint Commissioner Tudy Smith to serve as Board of County Commissioner Vice Chair for 2016.
Is there a second? Second. The delay. All right. The motion being made by Commissioner Schrader, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. He has been my desire to make sure that every Commissioner gets to serve as vice chair during my tenure here, and I'm now in my final, my final year of this office. This term, I better be careful about that. I didn't mean what I said. All right, we ready for the question? Mary.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow?
Aye. Passes four zero. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It'll be a very fun time, seeing what we can do to move this county forward, and I thank you for the unanimous vote from my Commissioners.
I'm sure you do a fine job. I'll just go ahead and be absent more, so you can go to work, right?
Oh geez, don't you dare.
And now, Mr. Crupp, we have a resolution.
We do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This first item is a proposed resolution to support the National Stepping Up Initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails. And I want to invite Chief Deputy Chris Hoy from the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, and also Mr. Richard Swift, our Director of Health, Housing, and Human Services, up to the table to address the board.
Good morning. Commissioners, we're here today to ask you to sign a proclamation involving Clackamas County into the stepping up initiative. It's a collaborative effort put forward by NACO. And if you sign this proclamation, we'll be the 199th county in the nation to sign such a proclamation, and we'll be the sixth county in Oregon. And the whole goal is to reduce the number of mentally ill people in our jail. As you know, from recent tours and conversations, dealing with mentally ill inmates is a major challenge for us all. And this initiative will help us with our collaboration with the H3S, and we have a longstanding collaboration with that department, and this will just further it and help us get technical assistance. They're convening a national conference in Washington, DC in May, where we'll actually get some technical assistance to help develop our plan even further, get information from other counties to see what they're doing, and to try to just increase our efforts in that regard.
Chair Commissioners, Richard Swift with Health, Housing, and Human Services. And, you know, with the passage of this resolution, I can't tell you how passionate and excited the department is about what our work with the Sheriff's Office, Corrections, and other partners in the county regarding really setting our goal for not having anyone with mental illness in our jails. You know, we have a really, really outstanding working relationship with the Sheriff's Office. You know, I think maybe one of the best in terms of partnerships in the state. And the things that we're trying to do in this county, I think, will lead, I'm hoping will actually eventually become a leader in the nation in terms of how we deal with these things. And ultimately, you know, years down the road, we'll be able to look into our jails and see that what we're doing is we are housing criminals, we are not housing people with mental illness. And this resolution, you know, is one step in that direction. And, you know, so I am personally incredibly encouraged by this and really looking forward to this work.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Well, Chris, did you have something else?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to add that, you know, we're, we have an opportunity coming up with the opening of the Transition Center that's really going to just double down on our efforts to keep people with mental illness out of the jail. It's going to give people who are leaving the jail the chance to connect with the community and connect with resources in order to not come back. It's also going to give people an opportunity, it's gonna give law enforcement a place to bring people if they, as another option to prevent people from entering the jail who don't need to be there, like Rich said, so we can focus on the people who actually do need to be incarcerated. And I do, I did want to recognize our, we have several staff members here today. We have our new Community Corrections Director, Jenna Morrison, here. If she could stand. Captain Jenna Morrison. And I have the new Field Services Manager, Malcolm McDonald. And I have the Jail Commander, Captain Lee Eby. And we have the manager of our new Transition Center Supervisor, Brian Imdike, also here.
Those at the back, away from us.
They're all new in their roles, so they're, except Captain Eby, but they're, they're excited to be taking this work forward, so.
Well, I'm glad that we have people who are wanting to tackle this very huge problem. I've been involved in the mental illness field for many, many, long time, dating back to the legislature. It's one of my top priorities. But I also recognize that our resources are so limited in what we can do. And as you're presenting this wonderful stepping up initiative, which I wholly support, what thoughts come to mind, okay, they're not gonna go to the jail, where are they gonna go? Do we have beds? Do we have supported housing? Do we have treatment? So, whereas you're doing exactly what needs to be done, that may put pressure or bring it to light what we need to do on overall policy, which is H3S and unlimited resources. So, I want to thank you for taking it on. I hope that you can bring points of clarification and possibly policy suggestions to the board on what we can do. And I'm very comfortable and I'm very confident with you two at the helm that this will be a very successful program. And thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, my brother used to work for Denver County, I think it's Denver County, and he worked in their jails. 60% of the people who were there had mental health issues. For me, the challenge is, how do you define what a mental health issue is? An alcoholic who drives drunk has a mental health issue. A sex abuser has a mental health issue, in my opinion. It's a really tough, tough area to figure out. And obviously, anyone who breaks the law, whether they have a mental health issue or not, ends up in our jail. But the issue is, at what point do they get the services they need? I've gone to many years, I've gone to DUI court graduation, and some of those people, you know, it's five, six, seven times before they make it. And we spend a lot of money, but I'll tell you that when it, when it's successful, it's incredible. It's incredible what happens. But the sad part is, they, many of them don't get any help until it's maybe two or three times. So, we have to step up and figure out how we're going to get them help sooner, before they kill somebody or kill themselves. And that's really, really a challenge. And it's gonna require an investment on the part of the state and the federal government, as well as ourselves. And I, I've been really intrigued by the, what I've heard out of Washington, DC, and the President's efforts to get those people out of prison. And I'm very encouraged, but we got a long way to go. So, I'm excited this is coming for us today. Thank you.
You know, my work with the Department of Corrections, certainly I've had an opportunity to meet a lot of prisoners and talk with them rather candidly. It was interesting to note in this information we have here before us today, that three-quarters of those with serious mental illnesses in jails also have substance abuse problems. You can call that self-medicating, you can call it whatever, desperate hope or plea that something's gonna change if they'll just alter their state of being, I'm not really sure. But I do know that at the DOC, once they get to incarcerate people for long term, they can design a program where it really helps them turn around. Now, permanent mental illness is permanent, and that usually requires continual counseling and medication in so many cases. But what, the number one thing, and certainly I've talked to the Sheriff about this, and you alternately, is a number of thing, one thing missing here is funding. You know, there are alternative plans across the nation that have seemed to work, including California, where they have a special place where you take people with mental illness, and they stabilize them, at least stabilize them, because oftentimes, they don't have to go to jail, they just need to be stabilized. So, you know, this is not a local problem. This is not a state problem, it's a national problem. It's an epidemic, and it continues to get worse. And until the proper funding comes along, it will continue to exacerbate itself. So, I appreciate this initiative, I support it, and I look forward to the funding. That's, that's what we do, isn't it? We always talk about it every year, if we had the money. So, I do appreciate this, and we'll definitely vote for it. Martha?
Well, I just want to commend our Sheriff's Office, our Corrections folks, the folks that work in our jail, because I believe this county has always been a leader in terms of how do you deal with people who are mentally ill with additional training that I know that we've all seen and been to with that. And, and one of the things I'd like to comment, this last budget cycle, we actually put money into a center that is going to provide additional beds, we hope, not just for our county, but we hope for the whole tri-county area. And that was the Unity Center.
Unity Center, yes.
Unity Center, yeah. That was a big step forward, because one of the things that we need to do is, as you said, if we're not going to incarcerate people, because that's not where they belong, we have to figure out strategies on where to send these folks so they can get stabilized, get the treatment they need, and then hopefully move out into the, into, to be productive citizens. So, thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I move, as our new vice chair, formal approval of Board Order Number 20...
No.
Up one.
Pardon me?
Up one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I was reading the wrong one.
Oh, my gosh, the new vice chair.
I know. I don't know. I move we approve the resolution to support the National Stepping Up Initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illness in jails.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion?
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, it's our safe place. Abusers tend to have been abused, and that just kind of is generational. And, you know, where we look for that mental health may not just be in a jail, it might be at our safe place to identify folks who have been abusers, and, you know, also reach out to make sure they get help, so that, you know, lives are saved and they don't end up in our jails.
You know, pursuant to that, you know, it, it is interesting, you know, if you've ever, look it up, it's called the ACE test, Adverse Childhood Experience. And you look that up, and you say, if you take those 10 questions into account, and you say, you know, what later happened to these children? And so often, and by the way, they don't have a propensity to become abusers necessarily themselves, but they also, they do have a tendency to be abused yet again later in their life. Now, again, the ACE test, and I've taken it, and I'll be honest with you, I was a nine. But the, but the point of the matter is, is not everybody who went through adverse childhood experiences will turn out to be an adverse person. They have an opportunity, they have a chance, and it depends on who comes alongside them and voices their confidence, compliments them, believes in them, and promotes them. So, not all is lost because you had adverse childhood experiences, but that's certainly a measuring stick. And I know our Sheriff has been, especially with his summit, has been very supportive of recognizing domestic abuse and what it does to families in perpetuity, and it is intergenerational. And so, you know, we, I really appreciate the Sheriff's work in that regard, just want to say that. Are we ready for the question? Mary?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow?
Aye. Passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Crupp?
Yes, the next board discussion item we have is consideration of formal approval of a board order declaring a local state of emergency and declaring emergency measures for the landslides and mudslides that have occurred in Oregon City. And so, our Director of Emergency Management, Nancy Bush, is here to talk with you about this item.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. So, yes, we are here to close the loop on our declaration. We want to thank Commissioner Bernard for being here and signing that for us, so we have to come back according to our county code to close this loop. So, just to recap what happened, there was a series of winter storms that came through that impacted the area on December 7th. At that time, there were multiple rivers that reached flood stage and impacting residents. And then on December 20th, from those rains and some rains that came in between, Oregon City notified the Clackamas County Emergency Management that a potential landslide at Berry Hill Apartments and Forest Edge Apartments was threatening several homes. The Red Cross was notified that the disaster shelter may be needed. On that same day, it was decided that there are 10 units at Berry Hill Apartments would be evacuated. The American Red Cross did set up a shelter by 6:00 PM that evening. The residents of the evacuation had until 5:00 PM on December 21 to evacuate. Oregon City signed their resolution of declaring an emergency at the city of Oregon City on December 20th. On December 22nd, at 10:00 AM, Oregon City notified its partners that the sewer and water systems had stopped working at the Forest Edge Apartments, the lower units only, there's two sets of units, and this was only the lower units. Because of the continued landslide, city officials ordered a mandatory evacuation of an additional 41 apartments. At that time, the evacuation deadline was December 24th at 5:00 PM. Due to the need for additional resources at the city and at the county level, and the uncertainty of what the landslide was going to do, Clackamas County declared disaster on December 26th, 20, I'm sorry, December 22nd, 2015, at 3:00 PM, effective until January 8th, 2016, which is tomorrow. So, the, through the event, Clackamas County Emergency Management, Dog Services, Social Services, and the Housing Authority provided assistance, including coordination of community organizations active in disaster, which is the co-ed volunteers, to assist residents with moving, and we are still doing this, I have a staff person still working on this. Assistance to residents regarding housing, including directly working with landlords to help place families, emergency sessions for people needing new Section 8 housing vouchers, five onsite shelter presence to assist residents, funding and FTE to assist with the needs of residents, and a hotline setup for residents to call to receive assistance, which Social Services is still doing. Sheltering of pets for those evacuated, and attendance at walk-throughs to ensure that all pets were out of the units and cared for. Our Dog Services really stepped up, and this was one of the first times that they were really able to come in and do what they needed to do, and provide that assistance that had been missing in other disasters. This is an ongoing situation for Oregon City. They continue to monitor the landslide, work with property owners, and have worked diligently to assist the residents. Oregon City has provided resources to those that are still in the process of finding housing and have gone beyond what is normally expected. Oregon City amended their resolution on December 23rd, 2015, and extended the declaration to January 25th. So, I will entertain any questions at this time.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I want to thank our citizens, our employees at the county, all of the private citizens that chipped in, and certainly Oregon City. I, I don't know if you'd be able to answer this, Nancy, but it occurs to me, well, this has happened before in this particular area.
Yes.
And there's still apartment units remaining on a historical landslide area, and what's the probability that this could happen again to the remaining?
Yeah, I can't answer that. I know that they have, the landowners have had geotech, no, tech people out looking at it. That was a couple of years ago, and it's up to the landlord or to have another geotech look at it. I really can't answer that.
Well, it seems to me these people are living in harm's way, and we could, it could happen again this year. We don't know what our weather's gonna be. And I'm just very concerned about how all this came about. I know that Oregon City, it wasn't their decision to have this apartment building built there because of the, our laws and so forth that allowed this to happen, but it's, it's a, it's a problem.
It is a problem. I will say, Oregon City is very vigilant, and they continue to watch this very, very closely. And they have been, they're gonna be in touch with us as well and letting us know what's going on. And you're correct, if we get more heavy rains, you know, we don't know what it's gonna do. So, I mean, landslides, they're unpredictable.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, technology's improved a lot, and we're able to identify these areas a lot better than we used to. But I think it should also be noted that, you know, sometimes land use laws are good. In this case, it was denied by Oregon City and enforced, made, the developer was allowed by the court system, not dissimilar to what happened up in Sandy. So, sometimes, you know, we, you know, we're gonna be talking later about work session about Sandy River light art maps and their potential impact. You know, it has a, it's really important that people know when they buy a place or move into a place, that that's possible, but it also is a very negative thing to the property owner, whose values could be decreased by the fact that there's more information. So, it's, it's kind of, it's a tough one. Up on the Sandy River, if you, if you have a chance, when we do our work session on the light art maps, you'll see the challenge that is faced by all those property owners, folks who have built home, people who want to develop sites. It's very, very challenging, and we still need to figure out how to address that. And, and there are people who are gonna be upset because we do that.
Commissioner Schrader?
So, Nancy, my question is, where are the folks who have lost their homes right now? What is, what's going on?
Many of them have found housing. As all of you know, the housing situation, affordable housing is very dire in this region, but many of them have found new housing. Those that are Section 8 housing, our housing authorities work with, working with them diligently to find them homes or help them find homes, giving them vouchers. We are also working with HUD to get some funding to also help people if they need, you know, time, more time to find homes. And also, Oregon City has stepped up to help some people as well, and, you know, in this gap that there may be. There were, we actually heard from, I believe, there was 50 families, only one unit was not occupied. And we heard, we're working with 30, the other 20, we can only assume that they did find other resources or did find homes. But we're working very hard to make sure people can find some homes.
Do you know how many children were affected?
You know, we do not. We've, it's been kind of hard to get some hard numbers, but there are several. The families that we work with have, you know, three, four, maybe five children in the home. So, and that's another thing, of course, working with a school and making sure that they're still getting to schools and that kind of stuff, too.
And my understanding was they were housed at the Oregon City High School?
Yes, that's where the shelter was. Yes, the shelter was at the Oregon City High School. We do appreciate the high school working with us. The shelter closed down on January 3rd at noon, and at that time, there were still, I think, five families that were in, in the high school, and Oregon City stepped up to help those families.
Okay. And the Red Cross was involved, I imagine, as well?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
You know, when I was out of town in that, in Salem announcing basketball, high school basketball, and it was nice to have Vice Chair, then Vice Chair, Bernard here, but people should know that in my absence, it goes to the Vice Chair. In the Vice Chair's absence, it goes to the Senior Commissioner. So, there's always a Commissioner available to do this emergency signing. I might note that, gee Nancy, you've gone through fire, flood, wind?
Landslide.
Slide. What else is left, right? Oh, I know the big one, huh?
I go back to the Midwest and do a lot of flooding and tornadoes, I don't know.
That's true, it's all over the place.
All right, Commissioners, I think we're ready for a motion.
I move, we, I move formal approval of Board Order Number 2015-134, signed December 22nd, 2015, declaring a local state of emergency and declaring emergency measures for a landslide, mudslide in Oregon City.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Schrader, further discussion. Our compliments to our staff.
Thank you.
We're always seen to be there, and you know, we talk about emergencies, and I'm the Commission's representative in the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization, we often talk, and I certainly have taken tours with different entities like PGE about what happens when there's an emergency like this, and, and how important it is for our county workers to come in and work. We always believe that you should absolutely take care of your family first, but after that, come into work, we need you. We believe that every service here at Clackamas County is an essential service and necessary for the survival of citizens here in the county, so I appreciate their work. I also appreciate, and I might add, the county workers that were resolute about coming to work during that slippery period, because it wasn't easy, and sometimes it wasn't safe, but we, I think Mr. Krupp aptly put it, that if, if it puts you in peril to come to work, don't come to work. But if you can make it, and I saw a lot of people during, every one of those days, because I was out, going through some pretty interesting stuff, very slowly, as they should, and, and going to their appropriate destinations, but I appreciate the county workers that have shown that they really want to come to work and take care of others, but I appreciate that very much. Are we ready for the question? Mary.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
I passes four zero. And next, Mr. Krupp?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. While we're finishing up the subject of emergency management, I thought it'd be appropriate to invite our Director of Transportation and Development, Barbara Cartmill, up to the table to talk with you about the winter weather event that we had over the New Year's weekend, and talk about the stellar job that our road crews did during that particular period, making the roads safe for the public to travel. So, Barbara?
Thank you very much, and thank you Commissioners for allowing me some time to come and acknowledge a couple of the divisions that have been called into action here recently. At DTD, we have a number of divisions that actually respond to emergency situations or disasters, and so, when, and I don't mean to say small in magnitude, but when smaller events take place, as the storm, which was of limited duration, or the slide risk, and then the severe weather, we had the icing a little later, again, a little smaller in duration, it offers this opportunity for us to practice and put into effect the, the emergency protocols that we practice throughout the year. We write plans and we do drills, but until we really get out there and implement them, we don't know quite how they're going to work. And certainly, this lead into the 2016 year has offered us that opportunity. Following on Nancy's heels a little bit during the slide season, I do want to follow up with the Dog Services. She mentioned that they don't get to be pulled into action very often, but they certainly were this time, and it was very interesting to me because I was on the email chain, you know, other people were doing the actual work, but I was there watching as all the local and regional partners came into effect, Multnomah County was involved, Washington County was involved, Oregon City was a big part of that, and then the Oregon Humane Society as well, and they were communicating with our folks back and forth, who's, who's here, who's there, who needs additional staff, who needs animals moved, and they, they just came to the table and never hesitated and were following up. The Oregon Humane Society came and took 12 of our dogs that were sheltered in our shelter and moved them to the Humane Society, not just temporarily, but permanently, they are actually processing those animals so we don't have to track them anymore. That freed up the space to move the six dogs and five cats that were displaced as part of the apartments that were looked at in Oregon City, right into our shelter. Commissioner Schrader, you mentioned that the families were at the high school, they actually looked at, you know, you watched these step by step, they evaluated whether the animals could be put at the school, or that wouldn't be the best place for them, and then the Humane Society stepped up, took our animals, you know, you're just watching this chess game virtually play out, just systematically and without any issues whatsoever. We had staff as late as seven and eight o'clock on Christmas Eve, again, this happened over the holiday, working with those folks and the Oregon City Police. We actually even transported one of the animals to the family gathering that evening, right over to Grandma's house. So they really did step to the plate. The good news is, they, they did recover their, their animals, all the dogs were down to one kitten named Roscoe that's, that's still at the shelter. Everybody else has been reunited with their owners, and where they're housed, I don't know exactly, as Nancy said, that's with a different division, but, so it went very smoothly, and I was very, very proud and impressed with the way those folks came together during that episode. So with that, I guess I'd like to ask the road folks that have joined me today, Randy and Everett, if you want to come on up. Then we followed that up on the heels of that with the ice storm that followed us on Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. So those crews immediately went to 12-hour shifts, day in and day out. We had a few road closures, and when Randy, when I mentioned coming in and taking the opportunity to mention this today, he wanted to come and bring some of the statistics. I think he's very proud as well of, as how that went, so I'll go ahead and let you do some of the statistical work, Randy. I'm sorry, Randy Harmon is our Manager of Transportation Maintenance, and Everett Hay is one of the road supervisors that handled the emergency response, and then when you're done, I'd follow up.
Yeah, Monday, or, this all started Sunday morning, Everett was actually out before eight o'clock checking roads. It ended up, this was one of those storms that, in every event, is different, this one was more everything north of the Clackamas River, we ended up getting basically freezing rain, so we went into, by noon, we had decided we were going to go in and need 24-hour coverage to get the road safe for the public. So we started off with a, a small crew on Sunday, nine employees, went into basically 12-hour shifts, and over the course of that, and it just, so it started about, and went midnight, noon was the, the second shift, so over that course, we ended up with a number, assisting a number of vehicles, such as a couple of TriMet buses, some semi trucks that were jackknifed on some of our roads, as well as a couple of fire trucks that needed some sanding assistance over in the Lad Hill, Wilsonville area, and, as well as a number of deputies, I think we had about four deputies that we helped as well, and they assisted us, because a lot of the roads, like Sunny Brook over there, we had so much traffic out there that, to get our equipment in safely, we had to basically have the Sheriff's Office close the road for us so we could sand the road to get traffic moving. Along with that, we have our equipment shop, and without those folks, we ran two shifts there. Without those folks, with keeping our de-icers and our sanders on the road, we, we can't function. So basically, over the course of the, the time, we had put out, let's see, we put winter sand, we put almost 350 tons out, covering about 500, 600 miles of road. The mag chloride, and the stuff has been great, but the weather conditions have to be right to use it. We had rain going into this, we couldn't put it down and pre-treat the roads because it'd just wash off, so we were able to use it after the fact and try to melt some of the ice. We put out about 6,200 gallons of this mag chloride for de-icing. So that, that, so we, we ended up, and then we were, thought we were rolling out of it, and the weather was supposed to warm up, and ended up getting this last shot of freezing rain, so we did have a very interesting three days, and I'm very proud of the crew. We were able to accomplish all this in very slick conditions with freezing rain, and ended up with none of our vehicles having to be towed out of any ditches. The stuff, we had one vehicle that kind of slid off, but we were able to get them out on our own, so it was a very uneventful, as far as damaged any of our vehicles or any equipment, nothing hit in any other vehicles, so we were luckily very safe.
Commissioner Bernard?
So I actually have two questions, one for you and then one for Barb after that, and so, on Facebook, there was a lot of discussion about why don't we salt our roads? I can tell you, as an automotive repair shop, I can tell you why we don't salt the wall, salt the roads, and I mentioned it on Facebook, but my, my, my comment on Facebook was, well, it eats up cars, and if you're any, if you've been to states where they do a lot of salt, but also, it, it's fairly expensive versus what we do, and, and so the liquid we put on the road is, is it common in nature, or is it less pollutant than salt?
It's been determined to be less polluting than salt, it actually does have a corrosion inhibitor in it, so, and salt, as you know, has been determined to be, you know, bad for the environment, so the mag chloride is more environmentally friendly, and it does, given the right conditions, do as much or about the same as what salt would do.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, thank you for your efforts. I live clear on the other end of Beaver Creek Road on Meadow Brook Hill before the S-curves, and you folks had sanded my road, and I was very thankful. We got more freezing rain the next day after the snow than we had anything, and I couldn't get out of my driveway. Well, I could have attempted, but I would have slid into the hazelnut field and got stuck in the mud, and that would have made my husband mad. And, what'd you do that for? And so, I was able to work at home, but recognizing the fact that there was ice all up and down Beaver Creek Road, and I noticed some parts of Beaver Creek Road were not sanded, and I thought, well, you use good judgment on determining what to do, and I want to thank you for that, because it let us get out, and, Monday afternoon.
Commissioner Schrader?
They focused their efforts on doing the intersections and curves, so the straightaways and stuff where it's, or not hilly is where we, we won't apply sand.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader?
I was actually in Bend when all of this was going on, and as soon as I got back, we had to come through the McKenzie Pass and up the valley, through freezing rain, and I remember calling Mr. Krupp just to say, how, what's the road? How are the roads? How's everybody doing? Because we've been through this before, but my real question is, where do you get all the sand? I mean, really? How is that? Where, where? I know, I mean?
Yeah, we have, we have locations throughout, stockpiles throughout the county, we have the sand shed here in Oregon City, we've got one down in Markham area, and one up at Brightwood, and so those are fully stocked every summer, we put dry, dry sand in there, and then as we use it, we, we almost depleted everything out of the Barton site, I almost forgot to mention that, but, so, we are continually moving stocks around, we're actually moving dry sand out of our Brightwood sand shed down to Barton, so that's just a part of our normal operation to keep that stuff stocked and supplied, and, because, you know, the mag chloride's been great, but there are occasions where we need the sand, so it's just another tool in the toolbox.
You know, I talked earlier about Clackamas County employees coming to work, and again, we should also be thankful that those blue collar workers, the men and women that work in the road department, you know, they know, because of the very nature of their work, how to get themselves to work, and without usually the sand being there, because they're going to be placing it later on in the day, but I appreciate those people down there doing their work and getting in on time and taking care of our citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, for your comments. That was the one thing of the two, well, a couple of things I wanted to finish up with, and one is my observation of the commitment of these men and women to getting out and taking care of these roads and making sure that they're safe to travel. It's almost an ownership of that, of that asset for the county, that they, they just want to make sure that they're there and operational and working, it's, it's just like they work silently in the background, and we're all worried about, you know, how am I going to get in, or am I going to go to work, and they're just out there making sure that that road network is, is as good as it can be, and it's, it's really impressive and, and a privilege to be part of that. As it thawed out, we got some calls about potholes, and I just wanted to remind everybody that our beloved pothole hotline is still there, but somewhere along the way, it was changed, its name was changed to Road Concerns. I think it was to be all encompassing. As I thought about it, I thought, I wish I'd had some input into that, because it's such a catchy little name to call the pothole hotline. But more important than that is, I really want our public and our viewers to know and understand that when they call that, we welcome it. It is not a complaint line, it is a line, it's a lifeline. It lets us know where those potholes are, because we need them filled. If they stay empty and water gets in there and undermines the road, it's a danger and a cost to us and our assets, so please get hold, let us know when those road concerns are out there, because we want to get out there and repair them. And the ones I've seen within 24 hours, that road crew's out when they know about him fixing that. So the Road Concerns is at, Road Concerns@clackamas.us, very quick, very easy to get to, and if you get on any of the Department of Transportation webpages, we have a link on there that if you click on it, it'll take you right to that site, and there's paperwork and forms and all kinds of information, you can let us know what's going on. So with that, I will thank you again for your time, and get out of your way if there's no other questions.
Commissioner Bernard?
Actually, my question has nothing to do with roads.
Oh, well, thanks and goodbye.
Thanks. The, what, in January 1st, marijuana applications are coming into the county, and I just want to kind of an update about, you know, how many people have applied, if you know, and, you know, what the, I guess, the reaction of those people are to our new ordinances.
Because this board has spent so much time working through the issue and has talked to so many citizens, I don't believe there were any issues or information that was given to people that came in that was not expected or that they're not working through. As of Tuesday, I actually haven't seen the Planning Director yet this morning, there were 13 applications. I think a number of people came in and left, but there were only 13 that actually filled out applications. Does that ring a bell? We were taught, we did brief on that.
Yes, it does ring a bell.
Yeah, the Liquor Control Commission had quite a number.
Yeah.
I heard, I don't remember the figure.
Those will be their business license sign, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you Barbara, appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I think they brought something for the commission.
Oh, what have we got? Oh, look, it's sand.
They sand.
We get presents.
I'm glad I asked a sandwich.
Nice.
Thank you, I could use one.
Wow, very nice. It's a coffee mug, we need it.
Okay, I'm going to have to put my name on it, or my husband will steal this one.
Shows how he is, doesn't it?
Well, then I would just drive out into the trees.
Yeah, that's right, I'll drive out into the trees.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and now I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda for January 7th, 2016. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval to apply for grants from Oregon Department of Transportation, Special Transportation Formula Discretionary Fund through Ride Connection, Inc., for Clackamas County seniors and people with disabilities. Approval of a sub-recipient agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for advocacy services in rural Clackamas County. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Technology Services, approval of ORMAP Intergovernmental Agreement, Contract Number 3436-15, with the Oregon Department of Revenue for digital GIS tax lot conversion. Under the Juvenile Department, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Damascus to provide youth offender work crew services. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a partnership agreement with Clackamas Workforce Partnership Board for the developing policy, for developing policy overseeing local workforce development initiatives in Clackamas County. And under our Development Agency, approval of amendment number one to the funding agreement between Clackamas County and Clackamas County Development Agency to cover additional debt services on the Brooks Building. That concludes the consent agenda. I also wanted to remind folks that they can visit our website at www.clackamas.us/bcc/businessmeeting, and they can view this packet and all the information.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, would you like to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Schrader, further discussion. All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four zero. And now, with this great layoff, I'm sure our county administrator has a fantastic update for us, don't you, Don?
Well, I certainly do, I always like to start the year with good news, and I've got good news to share. The first involves our Community Solutions Group, that's a division of our Health, Housing and Human Services Department. We received word that they met and exceeded all federal performance measures for its Solutions to Work three-year grant, which ended on December the 31st. The program primarily serves women exiting the criminal justice system, and we are one of seven grantees nationwide to do this particular work. During the past few years, the Solutions to Work Program has helped women attain permanent employment positions at livable wages by facilitating job placement and helping them develop their job application skills, so that's really good news, it was a great program. So, that's really good news, it was a great program, we learned a lot from it and good, good job, Community Solutions. Then the other thing I have to share is, is that, you know, we are beginning to deliver data and information on Performance Clackamas. This is our results-driven strategic plan. And Commissioners may recall that the Business and Community Services Department was one of the first departments to complete its plan. I wanted to share with you some findings, measurement findings from our County Parks Program as an example as to how this effort is developing. Two of the Parks Program's targeted results were that, one, that 70% of our visitors to the parks would describe their park experiences as either clean or very clean and 70% would describe their experiences as safe or very safe. And so, we've been actually doing surveys of our park visitors. We surveyed some, 400 people and that survey found that more than 99% listed their park as either clean or very clean and more than 98.5% described their feeling of safety as either safe or very safe at our county parks. And then, 97% of our respondents said they would stay at or visit our park again in the future. So, there are great results. I think this shows how it is we're going to be able to use Performance Clackamas to be able to identify for the public, our citizens, how well we are doing in, in the area of meeting our performance targets. Then, the other thing I need to do for you, this is a matter of just general business. During the two-week recess, the county administration has approved three different contract items, all involving Health Housing and Human Services. The first was an inter-agency agreement with the Juvenile Department, between the Juvenile Department and our Children, Youth and Families Division to provide what our Crime Prevention Services and Sexual Assault Resource Center training. The second one was approval of an intergovernmental agreement that was an amendment with an existing agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services, with our Social Services Department to provide services to Clackamas County residents over the age of 60. And then, the final agreement was a sub-recipient agreement with El Programa Hispano Catolico for bilingual, bicultural advocacy services. Now, all three of these were executed or signed by Laurel Butman on my behalf. I just needed to share that, enter that into the record, so we've taken care of that business. Thank you much and happy new year, by the way.
And thank you. And now, it's time for Commissioners' communication. Commissioner Bernard?
I was trying to figure out, you know, days kind of come together. Some things. I did have an, the Chair's going to speak a little bit about Bob Reeves' passing, but on Tuesday, I had an opportunity to speak on behalf of Bob Reeves up at the mountains. The rest, so I had to miss the executive session, a little bit of another session, but there was great attendance and I understand, and you may mention that there will be, the family's going to have an event. I saw that in an email shortly. And then, I also went, came home, did some work and then drove back to the Village at Mount Hood's meeting. It was, you know, I, I've been to a lot of challenging meetings. It was probably the most challenging meeting I've ever been to. I, Bob was a founder of this group, worked really hard with the county to create the Village at Mount Hood community, only recently left the board. I just thought it was really, and, and at Bob's event that I went to earlier in the day, I mentioned to the community that, who were there, that, you know, it's real, this was a big thing for Bob. Spent a lot of time and they need to make sure that the direction of this committee continues on that path. And so, they need to step up and make sure that that is, that occurs. Prior to the, the holiday, I had an opportunity to visit the, visit the jail, tour the jail and do an inspection. We had a lot of staff who'd never been in the jail, thankfully, or any jail. So, it, it was great to do that. And, and the Transition Center, which is an investment the county's making, thanks to the Justice Reinvestment Dollars, so that when somebody gets out of jail, they don't just walk out with nothing. They go across the street and find out, you know, start to work on, you know, repairing their lives, frankly. And so, that, that's coming along well and it's probably pretty close now. I'll have to go over and take a look at it. Also, I had a, a call from somebody to come and visit a site, a very large site that is very rural. It took 45 minutes or an hour to drive to, that is full of greenhouses and they're interested in a marijuana grow. And it was just an incredible visit. This person has, right now grows vegetables for, for many of the stores and restaurants, high-quality vegetables and there, it's such a large piece of property, there is some interest of marijuana growers in leasing some of his land. It was, it was the perfect site that I could ever imagine for a marijuana grow. You, you could not see his neighbors at all and it was just amazing. It used to be a very famous place, but I'm not going to say that because you might look it up and maybe you shouldn't. So, I, I'm, and I'm also, we had a report a little bit about the marijuana applications and, and, you know, I got to say, I'm very proud of the work we did on, on, on the marijuana issue. We didn't just jump at it, we learned so much. We took so much time and we reached out to everyone. Some weren't happy, but in, I would say, in the majority of the cases, we addressed their concerns. And I know that there's going to be some enforcement issues, so we're going to talk real soon about putting a 3% tax on marijuana, which for me, would mostly be code enforcement, make sure that places are legal. Now, we don't know what OLCC is going to do to, to enforce that and obviously, we don't want to say we're going to put all our money on that if OLCC is going to do that. But it, I think it's going to be really important that we, you know, enforce the rules we made and that's going to require, you know, listening to the fan noise, the smells and impact on the neighbors and we should invest that 3% in enforcement of, of our rules and OLCC could enforce the others. But anyway, I thought we did a good job and I, I'm, I'm really proud that the majority of this board moved forward on those regulations. And that's it, I'm, great Christmas. Oh, the dog. Great Christmas, great New Years, stayed home. Today, we're going to feature a dog named Sebastian. He's a little guy looking for a nice retirement home. I assume that means he's a little older. He is somewhat shy at first, but he warms up fast and will be very loyal to you. He could be, he would be most comfortable in a home with grown children. He hopes you can come by and meet him soon. For more information about Sebastian and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628 or visit them on the web at www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, we had a nice break. I particularly needed to be off. We had some challenging issues with my family and I took the time to re-energize myself and I call it detoxification and it works. We went to the beach after Christmas and hung out down there and threw some storms, but it was fun to walk on the beach in the storms and, and experience all that with friends, close friends who we've been doing this with for about over 20 years. And it's, it's nice to see our, our kids grow up, get married and the kids have kids and it's just a fun thing to do. As far as county work is concerned, we have, we've done a lot this last year. You can take a look at our website and just see all of the, the things we've done. We have more to do. We're going to get back to our regular land use planning and updating our ZDOs for certain things that have been put on the back burner because of the marijuana. And the marijuana rules have really taxed our employees, but I'm so, so thankful that they were up to the task and really proved that they're outstanding in the field now. Next week, we'll have our first meeting of the State Task Force for the reopening of the Willamette Falls locks. I'm very excited about that. It'll happen January 12th here at the county at 1:30. Barbara Roberts, our former governor, has agreed to be the convener of this. And that's a, quite a coup because she's a very busy person and she has a lot to do, she's in demand, but she believes that this is an opportunity for us to reopen and rebuild the locks and eventually transfer the ownership out of the hands of the United States Corps of Engineers to a local entity or local statewide government, hint, hint. And so, we've made good progress on that and I look forward to our task force meetings. With that in mind, I think that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Schrader?
Well, I had a wonderful Christmas. My grandchildren came out from Bristol, England and it was their first Christmas in the United States, so I managed to go to the Festival of Lights in Lake Oswego and bring home the teddy bear tree. And we now have more teddy bears, so we know what to, know what to do with. And they're heading back to Bristol tomorrow, so I won't be seeing them for a number of months, but it was a wonderful holiday. We drove to Bend and for Christmas, my kids gave me a ski lesson, which I actually had no gravity incidents after that. I really, I, I pretty much stuck to the, the beginner slope, which was fine. And I usually, I've always kind of skied. I didn't start skiing until much later, so I, I'll never, you know, beginner is kind of where I'm going to be, but I always try to get a lesson to make sure that I don't break something as I head down, head down the hills. And it was a little bit dire getting back because we did actually have to drive back through the ice and snow, but we managed to get home safely, so that, that has been my, my joy of the new year is having my, my two babies here, Jasper and Harper. And they're here till tomorrow morning where I'm going to have to say goodbye and there'll probably be lots of tears on my part, but I'll hopefully get to see them this summer, colleagues. As I reflected on this year, I wanted to mention some of the key accomplishments we've made because we really talk a lot about economic development and jobs. And one of the things our economic development team did this year, which institutionalized what we started years ago in 2003 and that was actually directly visiting the businesses. They did business-to-business visits, they had a survey that they pretty much asked and this was done because you can't help business unless you really know what their needs are, what their, what their big concerns are, what, what our role is in helping them grow and thrive in this county. And most of it was extremely, actually, all of it was extremely positive. The biggest issue they have, frankly, is workforce, which brings me to the second piece, is that we are involved in workforce and indeed, on our agenda today, we, with Mr. Madcor's help, we worked out our memorandum of agreement with our workforce board, which is largely composed of business folks. Because of federal requirements, we do have someone that I've been serving on it as a, as the government, government liaison. And why do we do that? Because this whole workforce thing is so broad, because part of it is really trying to find that pipeline of trained people that really want to work for the businesses. But then, the other piece that we can't ignore is the community solutions piece, where we work with barrieried people who are getting out of prison, who have had difficulties. And our role in this whole workforce continuum is not only the business-to-business connection, but to make sure that people who are barrieried in significant ways also have an opportunity to enter in the workforce. So, that was interesting to me to see that. One of the things, two of the things actually I'm, I'm planning to be working on this year, the Association of Oregon Counties has pulled together a work group with IAM, which I'm chairing with Loretta Smith of Multnomah County, dealing with affordable housing. Because this is a crisis that we're seeing, not just in Clackamas County and not in the tri-county region, but pretty much across the state. So, we're moving that to a statewide issue where we can hopefully come up with local and a state agenda of how we can help solve the issue that prices are going up. And, you know, my attitude is, I know that we, we're not really fond of metro very much, but my attitude is, I'm just going to find a solution and work around it. That's it. I'm not going to let other entities be barriers to what we should be doing and I think that with the help of the Association of Oregon Counties, we can help solve that, that problem. Also, I've been appointed to, by the Public Utility Commission, to a work group looking at infrastructure requirements for rural communities. In particular, how do we get natural gas out to those communities? I became interested in that because in Estacada, they have some beautiful employment land that is sitting essentially fallow and one of the barriers there is the fact that they need not only the transportation infrastructure, but the, but the natural gas infrastructure. So, I've just gotten appointed to that and will be working on that issue to help bring, I hope, communities thriving out in our rural areas as well. And one of the biggest accomplishments was that we've done so well with rural economic development and local economic development. We had a visit from the White House in 2015 that dealt with what we're doing and how we are modeling economic development in this county. And I'm going to be working with the National Association as Chair of the Subcommittee on Economic Development because I believe that our team really has done phenomenal work and it's time to get our bottles at a national, get the national recognition that we deserve and hopefully get what we do implemented across the United States. So, hopefully, I'm going to have a busy year. I hope that my sinus infection goes away at some point, but there you go. In any case, I look forward to working with my colleagues and I enjoy every single one of them and I want to thank the Chair for making balloon swords for Jasper the other day because he's still playing with them at home, so, okay. Happy New Year.
You can't take it on the plane, I'm pretty sure.
No, I can't, no. Oh, and I forgot arts and culture again, so you're going to have to read it.
You do it.
Sorry. Okay, the arts and culture activities in the county update. Second Friday film, Cyber Seniors, a humorous and heartwarming feature documentary, Cyber Seniors, adds to the important international conversation about the growing generation gap. Friday, January 8th, 6:30 PM at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center in Oregon City. New Century Players, Glorious, the true story of Flores Foster Jenkins, the worst singer in the world. Based upon a true story, the play spins from Florence's charity recitals and extravagant balls through to her bizarre recording sessions and then an ultimate triumph at Carnegie Hall in this hilarious and heartwarming comedy. I always grew up saying it Carnegie, but I, some people say Carnegie. Just to let you know, there's two ways of saying that. Friday and Saturday, January 8th and 9th, 7:30 PM at Retsch's Putnam Black Box Theater in Milwaukee. For more information about any event, go to the Arts Alliance website, clackamasartsalliance.org. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. This week, we did have an update on barking dogs and the barking dog ordinance that we implemented. What a grand success that has been, how disconcerting it is to have a neighbor who maybe doesn't even know that their dog is barking up a storm while they're away. But what a great success that has been. Our commission used to receive weekly, three to five and more complaints about barking dogs, so I think, I view that as a great success. We had an update about the Madrone Wall Project. Now, through a lot of fundraising by private citizens and some money from our tourism department, they have been able to design a program where they'll be able to open that, subject to a few things, including the, the National Guard helping out with establishing parking, but they probably will be able to open that. We believe that it'll be a great draw to Clackamas County as one more addition to the great recreational opportunities we have in this county. We talked about what's known as C-800, the plan to modernize our emergency radio systems in this county, which is absolutely necessary. The current systems are old Motorola parts and equipment, some of which they can only obtain on eBay and used, that's how desperate it is. And being that public safety usually comes in number one with our citizens, we think it's important we send this forward. It'll be a 10 cents per thousand charge, it'll be on the May ballot. This next week, on Monday, we have our Associated Oregon Counties This next week, on Monday, we have our Associated Oregon Counties, Association of Oregon Counties meeting in Salem. We have the Clackamas County Business Alliance and we do have a quarterly budget committee meeting on Wednesday at 9:30 AM. I might note too that, um, I'm really proud of this county in regards to community corrections because, uh, having, again, been involved with the Department of Corrections, this county, out of all 36, is the only one that guarantees 90 days of transitional housing. When these people get out of prison, they need to, to have an opportunity, a hand, helping hand, to get them back into the work world, to get them housing. It is so tough, I don't think people realize how tough it is when you're a felon to get housing. Uh, you can, you can generally assume that if you've had a felony, no matter when it was, you'll be excluded from housing. So it's very tough to get housing for these people and certainly help, great help with resume building, uh, towards their, uh, job procurement, but I'm really proud of this county, again, the only one that guarantees those 90 days. Bob Reeves. Now, all of us up here know Bob Reeves and have known him for some years. During our holiday break, we received the sad news of the passing of Bob Reeves on December 27th. Bob grew up in Clackamas County and attended school in Milwaukee, and after serving in the Navy and working as a firefighter, he returned to Clackamas County in 1977 and eventually settled in Welchus. He was a former firefighter and dedicated much of his life to supporting the fire service. He was a director of the Hoodland Fire District and served as vice-chair of the Governor's Fire Service Policy Council. Bob was a founding member of the Villages of Mount Hood and served as his chair until last May, and Bob was always a very calming influence. I wish that would return. He was an invaluable contributor to the success of the Hamilton Villages Program and he had great compassion, truly cared about the people and the community, uh, of Clackamas County. He was a driving force behind the creation of a transit district to serve the community around Mount Hood, and thanks to his vision, dedication and perseverance, we have the Mount Hood Express. Bob served the county in many capacities, as a member of the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee and on the Clackamas County Transportation Plan Public Advisory Committee. He was a member of the Mount Hood Area Chamber of Commerce Board and recently participated as Mount Hood's representative on the recent Marijuana Land Use Advisory Task Force. He was active in many charitable causes that serve the homeless and others less fortunate. Bob was a trusted friend and a man of great integrity. He was honest, funny and thoughtful. We extend our condolences to his wife Karen, to his family and friends, and to all who knew Bob. This, on Sunday, the January 24th, at 2:00 PM, at Mount Hood RV Village, which is located at 65,000, uh, Highway 20, US Highway 26, 65,000 in Welchus, uh, there will be an open to the public, um, celebration of Bob's life. So again, that's on January 24th, 2:00 PM, at Mount Hood RV Village, 65,000, US Highway 26. Today, we'd like to adjourn our meeting in memory of Bob Reeves. His legacy in this community will never be forgotten. He left us far too soon and genuinely will be missed. There being no further business before the commission this day, this meeting is adjourned.